Five o'clock, November 25th, Selectmen's Meeting. I just want to make a couple opening remarks which, one is just to thank Tracy for 20 years of service to the town, some flowers.
Oh, thank you.
There you go. Thank you. Long time Tracy, and I appreciate all the help that, you know, those are from Rich Mead, John Porter, Selectmen. So we just wanted to thank you for all your years of service. The next thing is actually a clarification on my part. At the last meeting when we were discussing the Chair and Vice Chair, I had said in error that it's a bylaw, which it's not. The correction would be that it is in a Selectmen's policy. So it's actually a Selectmen's policy that was signed by, I believe it was Scott Beliveau, John Powderly, and Aaron Burke. So I misspoke and I had said it was a bylaw, but it's not. It's a Selectmen's policy. So first thing on our agenda tonight is 5:00 PM Tax Classification Hearing with our Board of Assessors and Principal Assessor Harald Schreid and John Oliveri from the Board of Assessors. May I ask if anyone's recording? Oh, sorry. Is anyone else recording the meeting other than Lakeville? No?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I make a motion to open the hearing.
Second. Yes. Oh, Roll call vote?
No, just all in favor.
Just all in favor?
Yep.
Leah, Fabian, aye.
Aye.
Well, good evening. I'm Harald Schreid, Principal Assessor for the Town of Lakeville, serving a number of communities, but especially fondly Lakeville. Been with the town, I think this is my third classification hearing, maybe fourth.
I think it's the fourth.
Fourth, yes.
So delighted to be here along with Chairman of our Board of Assessors, John Oliveri. The tax classification hearing, as you know, is a perfunctory exercise that gives the Board of Selectmen an opportunity to either adopt a single uniform tax rate that would be applied across all classes of property, or alternatively split the rate effectively shifting the burden onto the commercial property owner to yield a discount on the residential side. We'll talk a little bit, I'll talk a little bit about that as we proceed. You have a document that I prepared and just to let you know that we're about, we're close to wrapping up the whole tax rate setting season, a season that started early in the year with the collection of all the information that we require to maintain our database, including an extensive, a large number of inspections of new structures, new homes, additions and all of that to identify newly taxable assets. We also undertook an interim, what we call an interim revaluation. We're required by Massachusetts law to annually update values to reflect fair market value. I might point out that we're, we never as assessors deal with current value, but in a fashion historic value, the new assessments will reflect market conditions as they existed in calendar year 2018. And it's the sales that took place in calendar year 2018 that are the basis then for the decisions we make about where to bring in our values on the various classes of property.
Okay.
Yep.
When is a full classification required? A reval?
A full revaluation with Department of Revenue audit takes place now once every five years. The last full revaluation audit took place in fiscal year 2018.
Okay, thank you.
So we come then to the end of the year to this classification hearing, looking to get your, your vote on what we believe will likely be a single tax rate. Historically, Lakeville has always chosen to adopt a single tax rate structure and we're assuming that you'll carry forward with that. Many of the numbers that I'll present here in the next few minutes assume a single tax rate. By way of terminology, I've provided on the second page of the handout some of the key concepts, including a tax levy, tax levy being the amount of property tax that we raise. This year, we're looking to raise $24,865,976 in property taxes. That only partially funds the town's budget, but certainly represents the lion's share of the revenue that it takes to run this town. The levy ceiling is under proposition two and a half, the uppermost cap on what the town could raise, and that, that is a figure of about $47,599,000. The actual levy is significantly below that levy ceiling. That's a good thing. New growth revenue came in at $404,745, new growth revenue representing all of the new taxable properties and assets in the community. That figure is up a bit from last year, but you drive around town, of course, you'll see a fair number of new homes that have gone up and condominiums and other constructions. So all told, we have an additional $404,000 in tax revenue that we'll be able to collect.
Yeah.
Yep.
Can, can I get a list of how that was calculated by property?
We do have a detailed report. I don't have it with me.
No, no, that's fine. Just if you could just get it over to Don Administrator.
Sure.
As for planning purposes for next year's budget.
Yes.
Like to look at, you know.
So interestingly, the Department of Revenue has gone back to a methodology that they employed back 30 years ago when I was Assessor in Lexington, where we had to detail property by property what we were counting in our new growth estimates. For many years, 20, perhaps 20, 25 years, they dispensed with that report and in favor of a, an accounting type method for calculating growth, but we're back to a place where we can actually point to each and every property that went into that $404,000.
Great, thank you.
The levy limit is under proposition two and a half, the maximum allowable limit to the property tax dollars that we can actually raise. We talked about the levy ceiling. There's another ceiling in effect. It's called the levy limit or the maximum allowable levy. That maximum allowable levy stands at $24,872,333. Conferring with the town accountant, we'll be looking to raise just shy of that figure. You'll see then a recounting of the various components of the property tax levy and what in effect is a very small excess levy capacity of $6,357. We really don't, in reality, that those dollars can't actually be raised without going to the next highest tax rate, which would then throw us over the maximum allowable levy. So when we sum all of our valuations, we find that about 86% of our taxable base resides in the residential class. The other 13.3% would be made up of commercial, industrial, and personal property. That, that bit of math tells us that it takes about, it'd take about a 7% increase in, in commercial taxes to yield a 1% reduction on the residential side. For that reason and that reason alone, the Board of Assessors has recommended and again recommends tonight that you do not split the tax rate. It just simply wouldn't yield enough of a benefit to the residential property owner to, to make it worth the while. Communities that split their rates often have 25, 30% of their tax base in commercial industrial properties. In those cases, those communities may split their tax rate to some greater effect, although I might point out that a number of municipalities that have split their rates in the past are actually looking to go back to a single rate, that in large measure to portray the town as a friendly place for commercial industrial property owners to set up shop. If you adopt a single tax rate, we're looking at the tax rate, a tax rate of $13.06. That's down from $13.30 last year, but what taxpayers need to understand is with this interim revaluation in our response to the claiming market, our assessed valuations on residential properties will go up on average about 6% to 7%. So values go up, tax rate goes down. Overall, most property owners are going to see something on the, in the realm of 2.5% to 3% increase in their taxes. It's variable depending upon the, the actual increase in devaluation that a property owner might experience. If you've added an addition, of course, of course, your taxes will go up more than the average. You'll see in the bottom of the page then what we're projecting for an average increase, residential increase, that comes to $321. So the average tax bill last year was $4,777. We estimate that that new average tax bill will be, titch over $5,098 to be exact.
And that's on the single family?
That's on the single family homes, yes.
Okay.
You will see in the condo sectors and commercial sectors, fairly comparable increases in assessed valuations. On the commercial side, an average of about five, roughly 5%. Condominiums may be a little bit lower, something on the order of about 7% to 8% on average. Again, it varies a little bit from development to development, but doesn't have to be over 7, about 7% to 8% on condominiums. I offer up on the next page then, a motion, and this motion would yield, if voted, would yield a CIP shift factor of 1.0 for the corresponding residential factor of 1.0. All that simply means is that when we do the math, we end up with a single tax rate.
I'll make a motion that the Lakeville Board of Selectmen vote in accordance with Mass. Journal laws, Chapter 40, Section 56, has amended the percentage of the local tax levy, which would be borne by each class of real and personal property relative to setting fiscal year 2020 tax rates, and set the residential factor at 1 with the corresponding CPI shift of 1.0 pending approval of the town's annual tax recap by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue.
Second. Any discussion? Want to talk about that at all? You want to contribute anything, John?
I would love to add more. I just have a problem speaking, but I'll do a very good job at caps.
Okay. Anything?
Nope.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
I do have a bit of housekeeping that needs to be done.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Before?
Before we close.
Before, okay.
Okay. So in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And?
So this is our Level 5 classification document. There's a place to sign below, but let me comment, the Department of Revenue now is requiring the Board of Selectmen to individually go into their gateway account. I assume you have one. If you don't have one?
I just got one yesterday.
Okay, great. You'll need to go into that account then. You can do that from your home computer or office computer and check the little box under Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
And make sure it's safe after you've checked the box. There's a button, it says "safe." But we would like to have for the files, the document signed.
Okay.
And you don't have to sign it now. I suppose you could give it to Tracy.
Okay. Great.
Good.
Okay. So we're good. Okay. Let's see.
All set.
Do you have any other questions for us?
There's only one question. I looked at the, the tax recap that's going to be submitted to the state for the tax approval. I was a little concerned that there was no overlay reserve set aside in the 2020 budget. There's no amount in the 2020 budget for overlay reserve.
There was the other day when I looked.
Well, there was $50,000 in it, added to it, but during the process of the budget process, there was no amount that was used for the overlay reserve.
For this?
For this, the current year that we're in at this point, there wasn't any, correct? It was during the budget planning purposes, I believe because of the amount that we currently have in the overlay, we didn't feel.
John, can you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yes, you just prompted my memory.
Excuse me. Well, if it prompted your memory, you want to?
Oh, no, no.
No. During the budget setting process last year for the current fiscal year that we're in at this point, 2020, because of the amount that we already have in the overlay, we didn't feel that we needed to continue to add to that, that amount unnecessarily fund it, so to speak.
The problem that I'm concerned about is that, you know, that was one-time revenue and that we're going to have to raise that money. I don't know. From the last time I looked at it, I think we had about $400,000, $500,000 left in the overlay surplus, which is now combined as one, as the overlay reserve.
Right, right.
So down the road, we're going to get burned because that money for the overlay that was normally set aside was used to balance the operating budget for salaries and expenses, and that's not a good idea.
My comment was not a unilateral decision at that point. We'd had discussions with the other parties to the budget setting process, so if you would like to continue going, reverting back to funding it, we're not opposed to that.
No, I know you're not opposed to it, but it's going to have a big effect on the budget. A $200,000 effect on the budget for fiscal '21 can have a serious impact where the money was already spent in fiscal '20, if you know what I mean.
I, I agree with you.
For salaries and for, I mean, for people and for expenses. That's the problem.
We're certainly hoping with the 2021 budget that an ample overlay set aside is built into that budget.
Well, I would hope so too, but what I'm saying now is that since that money was used and then not set aside in fiscal '20's budget, that money is now taken up by being used for personnel and expenses. So going forward now, we got to come up with $200,000 against reducing the tax levy by that amount, which is going to have an effect on the budget. Right?
I'm, I'm going to reserve my comment. I want to, I'm not sure how much we've pulled out in the past of the town is pulled out.
$225,000. That's what you did before that, two years before that.
So we talked a little bit internally about a, an overlay policy. Now with the consolidated overlay account that was implemented several years ago, a lot of towns are setting kind of a year-to-year running balance, target balance that we're running, needing to set aside and keep in reserves for actual assessors' abatements and exemptions and such.
I don't disagree with it. I don't disagree with what you just said, but the Selectmen decided to spend that money that was normally set aside for overlay to balance their budget, which means that going into next year's budget, if you're asking for $200,000.
It does put us behind.
That's $200,000 that comes out of the tax levy that we just talked about.
Yes, yes.
And that's going to be a problem.
I think we're on the same page on that.
I know we're on the same page, but, you know, they shouldn't have spent it. They should have spent it on one-time items instead of spending it on salaries and expenses.
Yeah, create a structural deficit.
Yeah, you created a structural deficit now. That's just one problem. There's other problems too. So just so you know, John.
Agreed.
That's the problem.
I, I agree with you saying.
Prior to becoming a Selectman, I was on the Board of Assessors too, and I can stand with John on that one, that it wasn't a unanimous decision to do exactly that. So you need to be very mindful.
Now, I know that town accountant Todd insisted that the additional $51,000, I believe, he has put aside for the overlay in the tax recap. I assume you're aware of that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So that's a start, but we're going to have to come up with at least another $150,000 if we want to continue with that trend. So let's not everybody get excited when we have to cut the budget, $150,000 to put it in overlay.
Heard.
Right? It's a problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's 5:22. 5:22, our next hearing isn't until 5:30, so, let's see. Maybe we can take something out of order.
Can we do number six?
How about we do number 11? That shouldn't be too, too bad. Is that okay with you? Six. You got that one?
11 you wanted to?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so this is to schedule December Selectmen meeting dates and times. So the proposed dates that we have right now is Monday, December 9th, which is two weeks from today, and then Monday, December 30th. I know that's right before the holiday, but that's just in case, I'd like to do that just in case we have any licenses that come in late.
That's fine.
To catch anything up. And of course, the week before, that's the week of Christmas, so I would rather not meet that week because people start traveling. So if those dates are okay with you, do you want to say 6:00 or?
Well, the last time we, we discussed this, we talked about that if we were going to start at 6:30, you know, as an example.
Okay.
I don't know, just to throw this out.
Yes.
And if we had an executive session, we could start at 6:00, so we don't have to do it at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
And what I would suggest is that if we asked the police chief if we could use the conference room next door, that way there we won't have to ask people to, to leave the room while we're in executive session, so.
Okay.
I don't know, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with that. Sometimes executive sessions can run long. We'll have to, you know, those are usually individually kind of planned anyways, but I'm okay with 6:30. Does that work?
Okay.
6:30?
Yeah.
Maureen, good?
Good for me.
Okay. Tracy, good? Lorraine, everybody? Okay, so next two meetings will be Monday, December 9th at 6:30 here at the police station, and Monday, December 30th here again at 6:30. Anyone good with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I know there was some discussion about going out even further. I didn't know if you guys were interested in even bringing up January at this point.
Fine with May.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind putting at least one or two in January for planning purposes. So two weeks from the 30th is the 13th.
And the 27th?
Yep. So that's 1/13, again, 6:30, and then 1/27.
Okay, and Madam Chair?
Yep.
I think we also talked about putting it out on the calendar even though we don't have the agendas available, right?
Yep, and Lorraine and Lillian were working out a schedule on how the calendar works because, as Tracy had mentioned, we have some kind of inflexibility on the way that calendar exists.
Okay.
But we're going to try to do a little workaround.
Or an announcement. We'll go out and use an announcement. All right. All right. What time do we have now? 26. 26. Anything else?
We could probably do the holidays schedule, I think.
Yep, number, what's that, 16?
14.
14. Yep. So the proposed holidays for 2020 are as follows. January 1st, New Year's Day. January 20th, Martin Luther King. February 17th, President's Day. April 20th, Patriots' Day. May 25th, Memorial. July 3rd, an observance of Independence Day. September 7th, Labor Day. October 12th, Columbus Day. November 11th, Veterans' Day. November 26th, Thanksgiving. November 27th, Day after Thanksgiving. December 24th, Christmas Eve Day. December 25th, Christmas Day. Any?
I'll make a motion to approve the schedule as presented.
Okay. Second, any conversation?
All set.
Me too. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
27.
27. Zipping right along. You guys do six? We did this. Board of Selectmen announcements. Do you have any announcements? I don't really.
Well, we had them here, I think, Tracy, but this is our first, first shot at this.
Yeah, so do we just want to wait a couple of minutes and then just do that?
We can do that.
Yeah. What time is it right now? 5:27.
5:27. Do we want to have the discussion about the scheduling of Selectmen's offices?
Sure, let's do that. We can do that. So at your last meeting, we were discussing holding office. I was at Senior Center. Anytime between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM on Tuesdays or Fridays, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM with the exception of the third Friday morning of the month from 9:45 to 11:00. They do have the café for the seniors there on Fridays, 8:30 to 12:00, so there would be people there. I don't know if Tuesday or Friday works better for.
Either day is okay with me. I don't know, whatever you prefer.
Yeah, and I think we said like each Selectman would do one.
Once.
Yeah, and then, you know, we could fill in as needed if someone.
Six.
I would say probably Fridays because we do have some folks there anyways.
Okay.
Does that, is that okay?
Sure.
For you? Okay. So do we have to like officially motion this in or can we just scheduling?
Well, I guess I'll make a motion that the Selectmen have office hours at the Senior Center on one Friday a month, right? Or we're not doing it every week?
I think one Friday a month should be good.
Okay.
We can start with that. You can make the motion to say at least.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, at least. All right, thank you.
Would you like to set a week so that Kelly has an idea? Either like the second or the fourth week of, for Friday of the month?
Let's see.
Do we know when Representative Orell and Senator Roderick's are there, what week they're there? Is it, I think it's the third, isn't it, Thursday or something?
Yeah, I don't believe they're there on Fridays.
Second? Do we know when Representative Orell and Senator Roderick's are there, what week they're there? Is it, I think it's the third, isn't it Thursday or something?
Yeah, I don't believe they're there on Fridays.
Yeah.
I would suggest the third, I'm looking at the calendar here for the next six months.
I think that's the thing that she has going on, of the third.
The third Friday morning, okay, yeah, so.
I guess we could do the second.
Yeah, that works. Yep.
So, you wanna do the second Friday of each month?
Yep.
Okay.
Second Friday from?
Guess we'd be there at eight-thirty, huh? Wow, me. Too early for you?
No.
I don't care what time, well, you wanna make it a little later?
Why don't we just say, like, nine to?
Ten.
Yeah, that's good. And then if there's people there, the cafe goes on till twelve, so.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Who wants to do the first month?
Uh, when are we gonna, the first month will be January?
December.
Oh, December, okay. So, um, I can do the first month.
Okay.
All right?
Yep.
So, the first month. That's the second, is that right?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, right? Aye, aye. Okay. You made it. All right, you made it. Okay, so, five thirty-one, we have a meeting with Mark Walters to discuss the 2020 Patriot Half Triathlon and 2020 Cranberry Tri-Fest.
I'm Walter with Sun Multi-Sport Events. I live in Westwood, Massachusetts, and I'm here at the request of this selectman to discuss our events next year, which one takes, is based right here in Lakeville, and the other passes through Lakeville. I, I didn't know if, should I just discuss, present the plans for this year and what we're kinda doing differently? Is, I don't know if there was any specific questions or just presenting.
Yeah, if you wanna just give us a brief description of what you've done in the past and, you know.
Sure. Okay. So, I'll start with the first race, which is on Saturday, June twentieth. I believe this'll be the fourteenth year of this event, which is a triathlon, which has athletes swim, bike, and then run. It's based at Cathedral Camp in East Freetown. That's where the swim is. The bike course comes through Lakeville, but no, no part of the run course comes through Lakeville. We have utilized the same course probably for the last, maybe nine or ten years, for a long time. But, there have been, you know, I've worked very closely with Lieutenant Sean Joyce from the Police Department, and, you know, he's expressed to me that there were definitely, you know, there's always some congestion, because it's, you know, bikes and cars and all, and, you know, he expressed to me, you know, concern about that after this past year's race. So, for the coming year, I've made fairly significant changes, at least as it relates to Lakeville. So, the new course plan, I don't know if you'd like, I can review the previous course plan, but the new course plan will have cyclists coming from Freetown, up County Road, make a right on Highland, down to Bedford Street, make a right on Bedford, and then straight down to Long Point Road. They will only be coming through one time. Historically, this has been a two-loop course, which meant cyclists came through Lakeville twice. Historically, and over the fifty-six mile course, essentially thirty miles, close to thirty miles, came through Lakeville, and that had cyclists coming through from about seven-thirty to around twelve-thirty. The new course essentially only utilizes about ten miles of Lakeville roads, so they'll be coming through from about seven-thirty until about ten, is my estimate. So, the impact on the town should be notably less. Any questions about that?
How many participants?
We usually have about seven hundred.
Seven hundred?
Yeah.
For both or for?
For the one in June.
The one in June?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and I looked at your website, and I may be wrong, but the cost to participate in that is?
Two eighty.
Two eighty, well, it's at two eighty to two four, four twenty-five.
Oh, the four twenty-five is like a three-race package that includes this, that race, and two others.
Okay, so it's about three hundred dollars, okay. I got a question for you. You're not a nonprofit, right?
No.
This is for a business profit to make, to make money.
Yes, I do try to give back and do give back. I make donations to the town. I also work on numerous volunteer groups, but yes, I am a full-profit business.
Okay. And how much did you donate to the town last year for this one?
The donation to the library was five hundred dollars.
Five hundred dollars. Okay.
Um, this, I'm sorry, I just wanna check the date, because last year, I know you're not going by.
The gymnastics.
The gymnastics place, but I just wanna be sure, if there's any place, I don't even, may not even know about that is, that could have that kind of a same thing, you know, we're not going by any other dance school or any other, I just am looking at this now for the first time, sorry.
Yeah, not that, not that I'm aware of. I mean, we've been on County Road before. Highland's new, so I'm not aware of, I've been up and down it, I've.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything really, until you get to the church at the end. Okay, all right. Okay, I'm sorry, Rich.
That's okay. I looked at all your events that you have coming for, for 2020.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All of those events, there's one, two, I think there's at least four, maybe five, and none of those events use any other town roads. They all use farms for the runs, so they don't use town roads at all.
Trail races do not. I mean, there's limited use of roads, very limited.
So, is being proposed, this is the first one, and then there's two others that are being proposed.
Yes.
Is that you're asking to use our roads three times.
Correct.
Where these other ones, you don't ask them to use any of the roads.
Because they're different, they're running, trail running events.
Okay. I have a concern about that.
Okay.
You know, especially, you know, five hundred dollars, you know, for the town to donate to the library is nothing, when you're potentially gonna make at least twenty thousand on this.
Yeah, I mean, yes, again, I do work with, we end up giving probably quote, I don't wanna misquote, but we do work with the Apocrypha Boosters, and, you know, I do try to engage with the community to help, you know, volunteers on making a donation, but I understand your perspective.
Well, I mean, it's just that, I know that in talking to the police chief and talking to the lieutenant, that there's been a lot more problems over the last four years, having to do with people, you know, participating, not paying attention on what's going on in that race. And it's not, this is the first one, and we're gonna talk about the second one, and I understand you changed the route, and the route is better than it was in the past. But there's still a major concern, especially coming down Highland Road, County Street, Highland Road, and getting on one oh five, which is a very dangerous, you know, road here in town. It's all curves, and so, and then going down Long Point Road. So, I have a concern about that, you know, and that's just one of them.
Okay.
The other one, I think, is even worse, and we haven't talked about that, that route. So, I would like to talk to the police chief about this before, I'm gonna vote on it, because I just got this information.
Okay.
Yep.
Yesterday. I didn't have it before yesterday, so I haven't had a chance to talk to the chief, and I'd like to discuss it with the chief.
Yeah, I'd like to actually have as many folks, to talk to as many folks too. I know that there were some, you know, big concerns going into the one in August. I know that there was still at least one folk, one person who filed a complaint. I think you had, I don't know, what are they, referees or something on the?
Officials, we do have officials.
Officials. And I did, I do know that a couple people said they saw whatever, but they saw the bikers still riding for across, even though we did have the officials. So, I really would like to get, you know, some conversation too with our own folks, the, either the police chief or Lieutenant Joyce, so that we can get a sense of how they, they feel. Also, going back to the volunteers, what is it that, are you giving them community hours? Is that what it is, the volunteers?
I give them a donation. I do make a donation.
Okay, so you make a donation to those organizations too?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Which?
The Apocrypha Boosters.
The boosters?
The, I work with the Fairhaven After Prom Committee. I also do a Veterans' Day program where I donate twenty-five dollars of every, you know, race entry received during a period. So, that went to Homes for our Troops in Taunton, some of the other groups. I mean, there's the Middle Borough Demolay, I've worked with them for many years. The Whitman Food Pantry through St. Vincent's DePaul, and they're out of Whitman, so they help.
Okay. And do you also give anything to our Parks Department for rent?
For, for, for the Cranberry, yes, for the race here, yes, there's that.
For the Cranberry, okay. Sorry, I'm just getting confused. Okay, okay.
Yeah, so those groups, I was just mentioning the other one for the racing year.
The other one, okay. Any other questions on?
Not on this one.
Not on this one? Okay. So, I'd like to table this one till we can talk. Do you wanna?
Oh, that's fine.
And we'll have you come back again? I mean, I'm sure you're, wanna be able to start doing your scheduling, but I, you know, I think that enough things have happened, and there's been enough conversations between all the parties, that maybe we need to get everyone in the same room and have a talk. So, we'll definitely have you come back, but we'll have to do our own.
Is there a scenario where, for example, the race here at Ted Williams Camp is not allowed to go forward?
I don't wanna talk about that one, no?
Yeah, I mean, we can talk about that one too.
I, I am very concerned about the, the course on this race.
So, so there's, you have two races. We have a race on Saturday and a race on Sunday.
Right.
And then we have the bike and run courses, so I have them labeled, which, maybe it's all of them, is one in particular?
Well, where I have a concern, and I think a lot of the problems that I saw, you know, and I happen to live on Old Powerhouse Road, I don't have any objection on coming through my neighborhood, where the problem is, is the corner of Precinct Street, and then you go, I'm, corner of Precinct, and you turn up Pickens.
Yes.
And you turn down Old Powerhouse Road.
Right.
There's nothing worse than coming down Precinct Street towards Old Powerhouse Road. Then you go through the neighborhood, and you come back through the neighborhood.
Right.
Right? So, there's double things going on, and I know, yeah, I mentioned in here, you said there wasn't people that crossed over, there was.
Well, I think you may, so, when, for the race in June, they would come down the hill and make the right onto Old Powerhouse. That does not happen at the race in August. The race in August, they, they leave Ted Williams, they go down Pickens, they make the right on Precinct, as you described, and left on Old Powerhouse. So, they're, that, oh, maybe you're thinking of the runners, maybe that's, 'cause, so that is what was addressed with the new run, proposed run course, to eliminate that overflow, overlap in twenty, for 2020.
You mean the Cranberry one?
Yes.
Well, it's still going through the neighborhood.
Right. So, yeah, so this, so that is for our Saturday race.
Yeah.
And that is the bike course.
Yeah.
And the, so, the run leaves, and then here's Old Powerhouse in here, so there's no overlap between this bike course and that run course.
Okay.
I think it's.
I think that's the most dangerous one. I've seen people fall. I've seen somebody get hit, you know?
By a car?
By a car. And, you know, and one of the other problems I have, which we need to talk to the police chief about, is that the officers, the detail officers that are being hired, we don't have enough officers to cover this event, and a lot of them are coming from the sheriff's office and so forth, and they're not paying attention as to what's going on with this race. You know, especially at those two intersections at, at Precinct and Pickens, and Pickens and Old Powerhouse Road. So, I have a concern about that, that we need to talk to the police chief about that too.
Yeah, I think it's.
Unfortunately, he's not here.
Right.
Neither one couldn't make it tonight, from what I understand.
I think it's the bike part that comes by my house, but I'm trying to, I don't see my street on here specifically, but it goes by Race Course Road, so I'm assuming this is South Kingman Street right here, and I know that's where the road in some parts does get wider, and I actually saw people myself driving, riding on the bike, three and four people across, and then part of that road, there's a curve, and it gets very narrow at the curve, and I don't even like to walk there, never mind having bikers. And like I said, I do know people mentioned to me that they saw the officials on the course, which I think is great, but even with the officials on the course, we saw people still riding, and I don't know, I don't know if, if you can find people, or, I mean, I don't, I don't know, I don't know how to run a race, but all I know is, I just don't want anyone getting hurt.
Sure.
You know, that's really what it's, what it's about.
I mean, I, I don't either. I mean, I think the, you know, races here, elsewhere, you know, it is certainly a risk of this, of competition, people on bikes on, you know, recreational ride. I totally understand and appreciate your perspective, that, you know, now you've got hundreds of people, and, and, you know, these are not closed course, closed courses without traffic, which is, you know, why we do numerous things to try to prepare people, with signage, pre-event communications, you know, we have posted on the Lakeville Facebook page, you know, we do postcard mailings to try to make people aware, so, you know, we do implement numerous things to try to make people aware, to try to ensure the athletes are, you know, exercising caution where appropriate, and, you know, I, I understand, you know, some throw caution to the wind, and, and then there's still, you know, I think where, you know, the whole riding multiple across seems to be, especially when it's up and hill, because they're going slower, but yes, I'm familiar with that.
And, I mean, I've always said that I like seeing the race, 'cause, you know, it inspires people, it's, you know, it's a, it's a good thing, but again, from when you started a long time ago, there's so many more people in Lakeville, so many more houses, there's more developments even, you know, along the route. Did, is this the same route, the bike route, or has this been changed?
So, for the Cranberry, the race at Ted Williams, the bike courses for both Saturday and Sunday were not changed from last year.
Okay.
What has changed is the run course on Sunday to eliminate the overlap that we were having of bikers and runners on Pickens, and then coming down to making the left on Precinct.
Okay. I thought there was a recommendation made by Lieutenant Joyce that I don't know if you, is that what prompted your change?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think there was.
I don't know if he put it in writing, I don't know if it was just a suggestion after the race.
I, I kinda forget, I mean, I think it might have just been that concern, well, yeah, Sean was expressing his concern, continued concern about that, so then that's when I committed to him that I'm gonna, I'm gonna change it.
Yeah.
And, you know, eliminate that overlap, so.
Okay.
He's seen, he, he has approved the course that you have.
This one?
Yes.
Okay.
And we've talked, you know, we haven't finalized the least detailed plan, but we certainly talked about where those will go and.
Okay.
And how many participants in that event, this event?
The second one.
Uh, the second one, kinda fluctuates, but it's generally more around four to five hundred, each day, each day.
Each day?
Yes.
Okay. You say you make donation to the park for the use, what was the donation?
For, so for the second event, the event at Cranberry, Ted Williams, I mean, it's a fee, they, I'm basically charged about five dollars per, I'm charged five dollars per registering. So, we ended up registering, you know, over a thousand, you know, when all said and done, but four or five hundred ended up showing up to race.[1765.52]
So it's like five grand?
It ended up being about $5,000 to $6,000 plus, you know, the rental fee and, you know, there's other costs that come in. But that's, the head of the, I mean, you could certainly speak to Mike with the Parks Department.
Mike Nolan?
Mike Nolan, yes.
And what's the rental fee, do you know?
It's like another thousand.
Thank you. The last question I have for now is, do you provide liability insurance to the town?
Yes. There's always a certificate of insurance that the town is insured. If I get off the top of my head, it's like a million individual, and then like 2 million aggregate. It's generally considered pretty good, but I, you know, I don't know what your perspective is on that.
Okay.
So all the questions there?
Yeah. I really would like for us to talk to our own folks, I wish someone could have been here, including from the Parks Department. So maybe we can just table this. Do you think the next meeting will be okay?
Yeah, that's fine, the next meeting.
Yeah, so hopefully, can you make it back? I think the next meeting is-
Absolutely, tell me-
December 9th? Yeah, on the 9th, so. Okay.
The only thing, well, I guess the last thing I'd say is, I, you know, I know I'm not a nonprofit, but, you know, I always try to run a very high-quality event, which takes a lot of consideration into the safety factors. Again, I recognize there are some risks. I think, you know, I'm an entrepreneur, trying to support my family, doing something that I love, which is putting on events. So, you know, I have a family and kids in college, you know, so I know I'm not a nonprofit, but I'm trying to, you know, make a living at this. So if, you know, I just thought that's important.
And just for selectmen on the camera who wasn't here over the summer, we had a last-minute change last summer. We asked Mr. Walters to change the time because of the triple E, and he was very accommodating.
Okay.
You know, with that whole thing. I think we went a little later, half hour later or something, so we wouldn't have folks arriving when the midnight mosquitoes were still out, or the night mosquitoes.
Right, so that we didn't have any people, anybody showing up when it wasn't daylight.
Right, right, so, okay. So we're gonna table, probably tell them?
I would, I would ask, and none to do with him.
Yep.
His letter is dated October 17th. And why is this just getting onto the agenda? Your fairness to him.
I think that was an internal issue.
Okay.
For fairness to Mr. Walters.
Ms. Chair, we had, we had a couple of large meetings that were very talk-heavy. And so when I spoke to Mark, he agreed to put it off until November, when we could schedule him in.
Okay. Thanks.
So we will see you on the 9th?
December 9th, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to vote to table it?
I'll entertain a motion to table.
So would.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. 5:45 with William Goldsmith to discuss a section of Howland Road for PMC Kids Ride on June 14th, 2020.
Hey, Rich, how are you? Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. So I'm here because I organized an event called Cranberry Country PMC Kids Ride. Last five years, we've done it at, last five years, we've done it at Oak Point.
Okay.
But because of the success of last year's ride, we are limited in parking there. And so we are looking to have a new venue to have the ride. And I've spoken, Rick Maderas has been an early advocate for the ride when we first started it and allowed me to speak to the schools, to the kids, to promote it. But now that, you know, Apoico just seems to be a really good location for it because of all the parking. And it would also be a very safe area because of the way, I have copies of the routes if you don't have them. I don't know if you have them with you.
Oh, we do.
Yeah.
They're attached, good.
Yeah.
So we want to close off the road that is going, is it, is it Howland? I can't remember, is it Freetown Street? I can't remember which one it is.
Freetown Street, yeah.
We're hoping to close off that road between, you know, between the school, the dr, just past the driveways.
Yep.
Going up to the schools, so we can have a continuous loop where the kids can ride without having to worry about traffic. I had spoken with Lieutenant Joyce, and he had signed off on the route thinking that it would not be difficult to do that because Bell's Brook, I guess, can be used as a detour. I wasn't even aware of that, but I was thankful for it. So he asked me, you know, I know that I had to come and speak with you all. The school has, I've spoken with, Mr. Maderas has signed off on it. Diane Zapiga and Jim Cabuccio, who I've spoken with, have both signed off on the school being used for it on June 14th of next year. Now it's just that they asked, obviously, that I had to come to the selectmen and, you know, get the approval that it would be okay to hold the event there.
What is the actual time the road is going to be closed? It says 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM, but-
7:00 AM to 2:00 PM is, I'll probably be there a waiter because of cleanup. I will be waiting because of cleanup. The actual road closing will probably, Lieutenant Joyce and I have to-
Okay.
Work out the specific details of it exactly. But probably 9:30 to 11:30, somewhere in that vicinity.
So a couple hours.
Plus or minus half an hour, a couple hours.
Yeah.
It's gonna be probably, because what happens is, the way the day works is, we get there at 7 o'clock, we start setting everything up. I'm hoping to have a large turnout, so we used to do rider registration at about 9 o'clock. A lot of kids will register online.
Yeah.
But we'll have people come the day of the event.
Sure.
So what will happen is, from 9 to 10, normally we'd do registration, but last year we did 8:30 to 9, to 10. We're gonna go, I'm probably gonna do 8 to 10 to really get every, give everybody a chance to get registered. And then we'll have the ride, I'm thinking it'll probably be an hour and a half, thereabouts, because then we have to transition to the party that we have for the kids after that. So that's what we do. It's probably about two, maybe, it might be two and a half hours.
Okay, but we're not talking all day?
No, no, absolutely not.
All right. Any questions?
Well, you know, just a comment, Bill has done a tremendous job on this PMC Kids Ride, Kids Ride. And last year, he raised over $100,000 for cancer research. 100% of the money raised all goes to cancer research.
What happens is, we raise, I go out to the community and ask the business owners if they'll donate, because what happens is, that covers the expense of the party. But all of the money raised by the children, 100% of every dime, of every penny, goes to the Dana Fund through its charity fund. And as Rich says, because we, we raised a total gross of over $100,000, of which 96,000 was, went straight to the Dana, because that's what the kids had raised.
Yeah, yeah.
So in the last five years, we've raised over, I can't say, 224,000. So my goal is to increase the number of kids that participate, and the money will come.
Yeah.
The money will come if we get the kids. My biggest thing is, I want to teach the kids that they can make a difference and empower them. Because once they, once they have that, once they know that, you don't know where they take that.
Yep. And when you say kids, 2 to 16?
It's 2 to 16. So we have, we have multiple, well, in the past, we've had three courses. At, the school will have two courses. If, when you look at the loop that we've kind of designed, it ends up being about two miles, you know, a complete loop. So we'll have kids that are comfortable on bikes, whether it be training wheels or not.
Yeah.
They can ride that. For the real little kids, we'll set up a separate course where they can do their thing, and, you know, do like a little loop. But the big thing is, you know, we hear a big party for them, but it's very important that they're on it.
Yeah.
They have to feel that sense of accomplishment instead of just having something given to them.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I'm all set.
I'm pretty much all set, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to, let me see now, to close Howland Road to, I think it's Bell's Brook?
Yeah, Seth, Seth said it's at Bell's Brook. I guess when you're looking at, if you're looking at the high school and you look at the middle school, the, he would close it further off, I guess that's Bell's Brook, right, it goes down there.
Yeah.
And then what he would do is, where the intersection, as you're coming up to that intersection to go into the high school and grays, he would shut it off, but still allow, there would still be the allow of the traffic to go that way.
Yeah, yeah.
And he said he thought that there was enough room to have that happen without problem.
Actually, as long as our superintendent of streets is here, do you have any questions on that closure?
Does the chief know about the closure, the police?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I spoke with Lieutenant Joyce about it, and he was, he had approved it. And I talked to Matt about it as well.
Because I've had hard times trying to close the roads myself for projects. I had a motion.
Okay.
So I want to tell you, I mean, I'll make a motion that we close off a portion of Howland Road for approximately two and a half hours.
Yeah, I, 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 I'll talk to Seth and we'll work out all the dynamics of exactly, but I can't imagine, I mean, should I say three hours, just to be safe?
I would say three hours, just to be safe.
Okay, we'll say three hours.
Yeah.
A three-hour window, whatever that window is.
And this, this section of the road is from the intersection, it's in Sean Joyce's email. This roadway of the intersection of Freetown Street to Seals Island Road.
Okay.
See that there?
Yep.
Okay.
And just as, as a matter of, just so I'm, I don't know if this has to be covered or not, because you, we also get the approval, you guys are, you're comfortable with us obviously using the school facilities, given that they've signed off on and all that other stuff?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so I second your motion. And the only other thing that I would like to add is, I don't know what kind of plan you have in place to, I know with some of the other race stuff, they do send postcards to the residents. I don't know if that's-
I've spoken with Lieutenant Joyce about that. He will, we talked about posting, we have a Facebook event page. This, the police station has, I guess, their own page, that they would also post notification. Potentially, they may send out a letter to people living that might be directly impacted.
Well, there is those houses right there on that street.
He said he might mention sending out a letter, he'd send out a letter notifying them of that event. And of course, you know, if someone needs to get out, we'll be able to get out. We're not gonna, not allow someone to get out.
But there is, I don't know if it's three houses or four houses right across the street from the high school, right there, that I, you know.
It would not be a problem for allowing those people to get out.
Yeah, of course, emergency vehicles, I would think that you're gonna have, you know, whatever on-
To give you some idea, I think you've been at a couple of these events. We've had, we have a lot of volunteers. So we're gonna get, I think it's maybe two or three details, I think, I'm not, I think it may be, I think it may be three. I think he said three.
Yeah.
Two at one stop and one at another.
Yeah.
But I will probably have between 150 and 200 volunteers that day. And a number of them will be on the course, as well as assisting in other areas of the event. But rider safety is my paramount concern.
Yeah, sure.
I'm an adult rider at the PMC, so I'm at Apoico.
Sure, I know. And, and I mean, it is, I just, those folks who are right there. So it's happening right in front of their house, right, you know, I would just, I just want to make sure that they know. I don't know if we can send a notice or something.
Can we clarify who should send the letter?
Yeah. What do you think, should we?
I think Sean said he would send something out.
He's gonna do it, okay.
He mentioned about sending, and I don't want to speak for him, okay? So please talk to him, I don't want to assume anything.
Okay.
But I think that was the case.
Usually what they do is they send out a postcard, which is pretty inexpensive to do now.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they'll just, they can easily get the streets and automatically print them.
Okay, so, I mean, I'm excited to have it there. My kids go to school, like, I'm, we live in Middleborough, our kids go to school, like, through school choice.
Okay.
It's kind of cool to have it in Lakeville.
Okay, so motions made, I've seconded. The only thing, I would ask Maureen to just coordinate with Sean who that, if they're gonna send the letter, or that way we're sure those-
Got it.
Especially those four, I think it's four houses, it might be three and a half, I don't know what.
I'm hoping they'll come out and cheer the kids on.
They probably, they probably will. I'm gonna put it on Mike Allen. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thanks, Pen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful, happy Thanksgiving.
You, too.
Thank you. All right. So the deputy chief ran in and ran out, right?
He had to go to an accident.
Okay, so we're gonna go to 6:15?
We can't do it, go point him, he's gonna be a while.
Yeah.
Said it was an accident. I mean, is the person here, or no?
No, he's not.
I mean, I don't see why we can't do that.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to appoint Reed Anderson, contingent upon a successful completion of the department-approved physical examination, physical abilities test, and a one-year probationary period.
I will second that, but I will mention that he's already passed the physical exam, so it's only the physical abilities test and the one-year probationary period. Correct?
Well, we probably should still have it on the record to make sure that he's been appointed, so.
Okay, so.
Motion stands.
Motion stands, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Does anyone have Will's number, so he doesn't have to come back? All right, so we still have a couple minutes before the 6:15.
10 minutes.
What do we want to do?
Well, we can do the board of selectmen announcements if you want.
Sure, let's do that. So we're gonna skip to number six, Board of Selectmen Announcements. Do you want to do this?
I don't care, I mean-
Yeah, if you want.
You know, we decided at the last meeting that what we're gonna try to do is, is have the board announce key events that are happening in town, not only including community events, but there may be an important meeting coming up with the planning board or the Board of Appeals. And so we know of four different events right now that are coming up that we hope everybody will support. I know that Tracy's, they're on the website, but I think that, you know, people are watching us. Some of them are, some of them aren't. So the first one is the Apoico Boosters Christmas Tree and Wreath Sale is on November 29th and November 30th at the Lakeville Townhouse, which is up on the corner that way. The Friends of Lakeville Library, we're hosting a holiday open house on December 7th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Lakeville Library. The Lakeville Lions Club Tree Lighting Ceremony is on December 7th at 6:00 PM at the Lions Club House at 170 Main Street. Santa will be available to take pictures with no charge.
Santa.
The Lakeville Lots Council is holding All Lot Glitters, a unique shopping opportunity, on December 13th from 6 to 8 PM, and December 14th from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Loon Lodge, Loon Pond Lodge at Ted Williams Camp. There'll be musical, entertainment, cash bar, and Santa's gonna make appearances at that one, too, on Saturday between 11:00 AM and 2:00 PM. I would suggest in the future, that, you know, we put these announcements right up front.
Sure.
And that way they're, you know, they're not kind of in the middle of everything.
We'll put them right in.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I was gonna bring that up under old business, but maybe we can, because we had these things scheduled, so maybe we can just put those things all at the beginning.
Right.
That'll make it easier.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, what else we got there?
608. Okay.
Okay, you want to talk about number eight?
Yep.
Okay. One of the other things that we decided was to give the public an opportunity to come in and ask the board something that, in case they had a question or a concern. We may not necessarily address this, that issue at the meeting, but at least give them a public forum to bring up anything they want to talk about. And, you know, we probably set aside 10 minutes, you know, for every meeting or whatever. And I don't think there's anybody out here that, you got anything, Brian?
I feel like I should say something.
Sure, go right ahead.
We know that the first meeting, this is happening, so as people see this and get more involved, that, you know. You know, oh, you're, okay, he's gonna ask a question.
All right, Brian Dale, Aldis Pond Drive. Really happy to see the office hours coming. I think that's, you know, another great way for you guys to get in touch with the community. I think something that might be helpful is also to kind of set ground rules and expectations for those. So in case you get somebody coming in kind of really hot to trot on an issue, they understand what you're there for. You know, is it a conversation, is it to try to get something on the agenda? I don't want folks to put you in a bad position and think just because they're coming in to say something that that means an action is gonna be taken. So whatever that format might be, a little set of rules on the webpage, whatever. whatever, just to keep everybody kind of understanding.
I would think it's up to the individual board member that's gonna be doing it to decide whether, you know, this has become so, something that's out of control.
Sure.
And, you know, I think they need, just need to control it. That's a good comment.
But just, yeah, since in overall, these are what the meeting minutes, meetings are for and not for.
Meetings are for.
It's helpful, but thanks for doing those, it was great.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
Sir, anything? You sure? Okay, okay, um, so...
Okay.
Six ten. Six ten, okay. So, um, what do we have on the formats?
Madam Chair, basically, I was just looking for some guidance on how you want the new meeting agenda set up.
Okay, so sort of what we just started talking about.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, so we're gonna do, um, number nine, so like today we started with the hearings because we had those sort of...
On schedule, yeah.
Yeah, pre-arranged from before, um, so maybe we can do, uh, probably Board of Selectmen Announcements first, which, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, um...
Public input session.
Public input session, and then...
Town Administrators Report.
Town Administrators Report, and then...
Is there, is there a reason why, do we wanna do the minutes up front, get those over there?
Yeah, we could do that up front.
We, we typically put them there because at some meetings it's so long that by the time you get to the end of something, you want something that, you know, you don't have to really make a decision on, you just, you know...
Work hard at it.
Well, we can put them in the front, that's fine.
Doesn't make any difference, but, and you're gonna have to do them anyways.
You wanna try and put them in the front?
Um...
Minutes, minutes.
Yeah, let's put them in the front.
Yeah, let's try them in the front, we're making changes, why not?
Okay.
Let's be daring. Um, can you just send that out, just in an email, so...
Sure.
What we just said. Anything else? I think that's everything that we talked about.
I think everything else falls into place, I believe.
Yeah, okay.
We got three minutes, maybe we could go for number fifteen, or maybe, I don't know, will you make it?
No, fifteen, it'll take a few minutes.
Take a few minutes.
I guess we could do the voting in extended hours.
Yeah, or we could do eighteen, they'll sign, you wanna do the sign?
Yeah.
All right, we'll do number eighteen, so that is, number eighteen, uh, request from the Lakeville Arts Council to place signs for All That Glitters event, so the board has received a request from the Lakeville Arts Council to place a two-foot by four-foot A-frame sign at the intersection of Precinct Street and Rhode Island Road, they have permission to place one at the Lions Club also, um, and they're asking to have this event posted on the community sign as well.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I assume that you'll take care of the community sign?
Yeah, it's on the schedule.
Thank you.
All right, so, we got that done?
Two minutes.
All right, what else? Do we wanna do an open space appointment? That shouldn't take long.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, so, agenda item number nineteen, request from the Open Space Committee to appoint Donna Wabreck, Warbrick, as a member of the Open Space Committee, I apologize if I didn't say the name correctly, the Open Space Committee has a vacancy for a member at large, so, uh, Ms. Wabreck has sent in a letter of interest for the vacancy. Her, if appointed, her expiration date would be July thirty first, twenty twenty.
So moved.
All those in fa, uh, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, got that?
Six fourteen.
Hey, wait, hold on.
The storage permit. Wanna do the storage permit?
Uh, okay.
I can't even find that one.
Twenty?
Number twenty?
Twenty. Request for renewal of temporary storage permit, we have received a request for renewal of a temporary storage permit from Nineteen Stetson Street, if approved, the permit would expire on December third, twenty twenty.
Uh, what is temporary mean?
Yeah, and...
Well, he's had this permit for years.
For years?
Probably since the last time you were on the board, um, the temporary, it's called a temporary storage permit, 'cause that's what it's called under the bylaws.
What is this storage thing used for?
I believe he uses it to store tools.
Tools.
Is it a shed?
No, no, it's not a shed, I'm not sure if it's a pod, or if it's a similar, um, thing for that, but he, he locks it and, um...
He what?
He locks it up, 'cause of his, his tools that are in there.
Uh...
Okay.
Okay, um, is the zoning enforcement officer okay with this?
Yeah, he, he's fine with it, and Nate's tried, um, for years to convince him to just apply for a shed permit and pay the forty dollars once, but, um, Phil religiously, um, actually, I never have to chase him, he renews automatically, so, um, he pays his twenty-five dollars every year.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to renew the temporary storage permit for Nineteen Stetson, Stetson Street to expire on December third, two thousand and twenty.
Second, all those in favor? Aye. Okay. Are we good?
We're good.
We're good.
Okay.
Made it.
Six fifteen, meet with Superintendent of Streets, Franklin Monies, Monies?
I know he wants to be called Frank, so I'm just gonna call him Frank.
Regarding the following, so we have one, two, three, four things, sanding of private roads, discuss a new job description for seasonal repair maintenance labor, discuss reclassifying emergency highway operator position, and review a bid for two, three-sided metal buildings. What's your fancy, in order?
Sure.
Okay. All right, sanding of private roads, attached in the annual memo, that goes out to the private associations in case the police or fire chiefs repress the sanding of private road of safety reasons, okay?
So I would say, all I changed on that was the pricing, and the pricing just reflects what we would pay, um, so if I were to send one of my contractors there with a sander, that's the rate we would pay, and then the tonnage is the rate we pay for the salt and mag, um, that being said, I would say this is more, I ca, I can't even see us ever really charging back, because typically it's, uh, it wouldn't be, I, I would try not to anyway, um, do any kind of actual sanding and, and plowing of the road more than what we've done in the past, it's typically one pass to open it up to get the fire truck there or the police there, and then sand our way back out, and that's it, so to charge that back, it would be like, ten minutes and like, maybe thirty pounds of salt, it would be such a miniscule thing, um, I just don't want this to open up anything where if it becomes an elderly type area or something where, you know, maybe it's, it's, could be deemed, um, a safety issue if their roads aren't plowed, where we're, we're in a position where we actually need to plow and open up the entire roads.
Okay, I'm actually unaware that, is this for emergency purposes only, or in general? You do it, make one pass and...
I've only done it for, since I've been here, um, if the police call, but I've never, all we do is literally open a path, go back out, I've never had to actually, I guess in the past, though, there has been times where we've actually had to plow entire roads, um, because of...
An emergency.
What was deemed a safety issue, because if there were an issue there, emergency vehicles wouldn't have been able to get there, and they called it in, in that case.
Okay, and these are on...
Private.
Private associations?
Yep.
Or streets that haven't been approved yet by the town, or...
If it hasn't been approved, it's still be considered private.
It's still considered a private, okay. All right.
So the only change I made to it was just the pricing.
Okay, all right.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, sanding of private roads, uh, on the letter that dated November sixth, two thousand and nineteen, uh, with the, the new rates, uh, as being proposed.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, Franklin, I'll send it out to, um, the associations, I have the mailing list.
Okay.
So I'll get it out to them. Could you, um, put it on Letta Head, though, and then scan it and send it back to me, so it looks a little official?
Sure.
That'd be great, thanks.
Am I writing in? Was it penned on the...
So, the second thing is, uh, discuss the new job description for seasonal repair and maintenance laborer.
Yep, so this job is, right now, it's specifically for, um, George Freyts, who, when I started, he was basically acting, um, superintendent, I guess you would say, um, and then I've continued to use him since then, but he doesn't actually have a job description, um, and I would say with his skill set, and the fact that he has thirty-plus years in the town, and, um, just what he's capable of doing, I, I felt that, you know, putting him at the, uh, level six, at top step is more than fair for someone of his capabilities, and, I mean, I use him for pretty specific things, such as like auto bodywork, painting, things like that, so he's doing, um, very specific, um, craftsman-type jobs, and that's the basis of why we, me and Karen, uh, set this job description up for him.
And this is only, uh, part-time?
Yeah, whenever I, whenever I need him, basically, which is very, I mean, he still plows for me, but that wouldn't fall under that, that falls under something separate, but, um, that's really if I need a, some auto bodywork, a truck, or things of that nature, he wouldn't be cutting grass or doing any of those type of things, specifically for, you know, craftsman-type work.
Okay.
You okay?
Um, yeah, so we'll do each of them separately?
Yeah, uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the revised, or is this new?
This is new.
New.
Yeah.
New, seasonal repair and maintenance laborer Highway Department, um, to level six, and step five.
Yep.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the next one is reclassifying emergency highway operator position, AKA snowplow driver.
Yep, so this is just a reclassification, putting in from a level eight to a level six, and hopefully bringing in, um, some highway operators for snowplowing, right now we have zero, uh, when I started, we had two guys doing this, um, last year, we lost one and couldn't replace them, so we were down to one, and this year I lost that, that driver, um, and we haven't been able to fill those positions, I don't know for sure that reason up the price is gonna bring them in or not, but I, I definitely think it's more than a fair, um, hourly rate to pay a guy to come in and plow.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
It's, uh, it's a problem being competitive out there, especially in the private, you know, plowing, even the state, I mean, the state pays, you know, a lot of money.
Yeah.
And to have a few guys to, to drive our trucks, you know, do the plowing, is actually gonna save us money by not having to go out and hire, uh, drivers, uh, hiring plow companies to come in and plow the roads.
Yeah, and I think actually, um, Mr. Day had made a very valid point at a meeting when we discussed some of the other...
Yeah, you did.
Where, if we can actually get more people...
The more we manage, the quicker we get them to understand.
The quicker, right.
Yep, that was a great point.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that, you wanna?
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the job description for emergency highway operator, uh, I don't see...
Says level eight.
Uh, level eight.
To level six.
Level six.
Okay, um, second, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, and, and the last one is review the bid for two, three-sided metal buildings.
Yeah, basically, we only got one bid in, we've gone multiple times, um, we have a certain individual that's already built two buildings for us, but for some reason he just can't come through, um, with the quotes, but, so I guess, basically, the, the amount they came in on this bid is way too high, um, basically it puts me way over what I would, uh, what I have available for my capital item, and it's overpriced for comparable to the other buildings that I've gotten, um, so, we're basically back somewhat to the drawing board at this point, so we'll have to go back out, um, to get more quotes.
So, we have to, we have to reject this bid, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
Okay.
Um, what, what are we looking to put in this anyway? I'm just curious.
Salt.
Oh, okay.
So that's gonna replace the big salt shed we have now?
Yeah.
Um, with two small salt sheds, um, and then what it'll do is free up, our lodge salt shed to be refurbished for dry storage.
Okay.
To be able to get some of our trucks and equipment out of the elements.
Out of the elements, okay.
They don't prolong their life.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to reject this bid.
Uh, from Collins Construction?
From Collins Construction for the seventy-one thousand, thirty dollars.
So moved.
Uh, second on that, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else? That's it, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
How's it with baby?
Yeah, great.
Yeah.
Look at that smile, I love it. I love it.
Happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
So now I guess we have no restrictions.
All right, so, if we're gonna go in order, it's seven. Yep, Town Administrators Report.
I may, Madam Chair, so, um, I was asked at the last meeting, um, to have, every time we have a meeting, to have a small report section in that meeting, where I just let people generally know what's been going on in the town hall for the last few weeks, so I, I wanted to talk about some things that we've got going on, um, so, in, uh, in the town clerk's office, uh, we are beginning to start the process of codification, or recodification, of bylaws, it's been something that's been on the books for a while, and something I guess Lil had been asking for, um, we're trying to match up our bylaws with the state's bylaw, uh, general laws that have changed over time, um, sometimes we'll go in to research an issue, where there'll be conflicting knowledge on the issue, and we'll say, well, that's not what this bylaw says, but the law that it's pointing to says something different.
Right.
So we've had a bunch of those issues in the last couple months, where we've seen some stuff that is just not making sense for, for the town, so this company comes in, um, not only do they clean it up, um, they work with, uh, the town clerk and, uh, the planning board to do so, so it's a collaborative process, um, they clean it up, uh, they make sure it's pointing to the right laws, and they put it in a searchable database, so we'll take that database and we'll be able to use it to make other people aware in town, to be able to say, I wanna search on anything to do with housing, and then all our bylaws that have to do with housing will pop up and be a reference point for them, and, um, and it'll teach us going forward how we can also add that in, so it'll be something that not only will be fixing from the past, but we're having a future to going the right way, so...
Uh, make sure Nate is involved in that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And it is for the general bylaws of the town, but also the zoning.
Correct, yeah, it's very important to have them both, because not only are the laws sometimes changed, sometimes the language isn't what we want it to be, it, it leaves a little bit too much for interpretation, or the wording is, you know, odd, so...
Yeah, and they'll bring those kinds of things.
Yep, and they'll clean it up, and that'll be, like I said, a collaborative effort.
So we could have an interesting annual meeting with a lot of...
Yes, it'll be, one by one, everyone has to read it off.
Yeah, okay.
So, that's something that we have going on, um, just an update on, uh, the ADA, the IT, and the joint grant with Freetown, um, the state has not let us know, um, anything on any of those yet, um, they told it sometime in November, so probably January. Um the state has not let us know um anything on any of those yet. Um they told it sometime in November, so probably January.
Okay.
Um we're gonna talk about this in the next issue, so um the Board of Health Inspector has resigned, and I know we'll talk about that. We hired a new part-time maintenance per uh person, uh position to support the PD in the town, and they started a few weeks ago, so they're well immersed in the town and they're chugging along. Um we're gonna get the jump on the budget season. We have individual budget workshops scheduled with the department heads and the town accountant to make sure we're all starting from the same place and making this our budget this year.
Okay.
Um we've tasked the department heads with updating the FAQ section of the webpages. So um I believe everyone has got back to us now and has updated the FAQs, but I'll do a check on it. But there was a few issues that I saw with kind of formatting issues, like you would be looking at one page and it would be over here. You'd be looking at another page and over there. So not only do we wanna do that, we wanna make sure that people are able to navigate the the webpage and look for the same stuff in the same area. Um uh we are catching up on any minutes, especially with the BOS. We've got um tons and tons of minutes for you guys to approve, and we're making sure that we don't get behind. Uh we're also asking other boards to ensure that not only are they up to date on their minutes, that they're, they have a plan going forward, and that we're gonna try to support them by by going out and looking for that position again that we couldn't fill with the secretary. Um because I, some of them, it's it's really a struggle to to get them done, and we wanna be able to support the boards when they need them, especially for something like a hearing or an executive session or something that they might not be sure how to get those minutes done.
Okay. Um I did have a conversation, just to add a little bit, with one of the attorneys. And you know, there's a a varying opinion on what minutes are supposed to be. They're still supposed to be representative of what happened at the meeting. So maybe, not immediately, but maybe, you know, um maybe at some point in January, um the end of January, maybe we could put together a little seminar on what we wanna see, because it seems to me that, you know, some boards aren't really, they're very brief, others seem to be ve- very long, so, you know, make sure-
And we're very lucky, and we're very lucky that if if the minutes are maybe too brief for someone to get a full picture, there's a very good chance that it's been captured also.
Right.
You know, and and even though it's not an official record, it it's something that people can turn to.
Right, there was discussion at the last meeting about, you know, doing bullet points so that the meet, the minutes can get done, but, you know, like the attorney had said that we need a little bit more information than that, because it's still, as of now, the legal record.
Yep.
Um so maybe we can just look, I don't know, the attorneys usually give us a couple of free seminars a year, maybe we can-
Procurement, but we can absolutely do-
Yeah, maybe one of the other ones.
The open meeting law for minutes.
Yep, so maybe we can, you can just put that and have a conversation when you get a chance with them about that, so.
We'll do.
Okay.
Um we've got some CGI mapping uh programs. It's been rolled out to our department heads um at the October uh department head meeting. Um it's going to enable us to put extra layers on things that we deem important as a town to to map them, um especially things like, you know, where all our fire hydrants are for the fire department. Um but we could actually go even a step further, and we can map where some of our um our elderly are um if we're having an emergency and be able to reach out to them and make routes to them if there is an emergency. Um so right now, uh department heads are figuring out what they wanna put on it to customize it, but it should be live as of today um to actually just go in and look at it. Uh I didn't get the link, but I'll get the link for it, so anyone can go and look at it. We'll put it on the uh, in the blast, so people can start just looking. I mean, it's just fascinating to go in and see all the fields that they have already and stuff that you can really see, but we're watching them do um triangulate uh an area so they could see um from what point the fire hydrant is, how much hose that they would need to roll out to make sure that they had enough to uh, you know, to to support a fire in this house or that house or the other. So it's really interesting, and I think it's something that going forward will help make our town a little bit safer and a little bit easier to navigate. Um. The MCCPO classes taken for procurement certification um uh as part of my job and um as part of Lorraine's position, we've updated some of what we're doing as far as procurement. Um there was a class that was at the, in-
October?
In October, uh for the first level of procurement training. Um both of us took it and passed it for the, so that's the first step for me out of three. Um I also got my notary public designation, so come on in, I'll start trying my stamp out on everyone. Viewpoint software is our permitting software. Um this week, it's supposed to, it'd be in its beta testing phase. Uh we've been using it already to build permits, so people have been able to build, but they've still had to come in and pay. So now it's going to be that they're going to get to pay online, and that's gonna do a bunch of things. It's gonna be more convenient for the taxpayer to be able to to pay online, and it's gonna say it takes some of the traffic out of town hall, so.
You mean paying by cha- by credit card?
By debit and charge, yeah, debit and charge. Uh I will find out specifically if there's a charge associated with the charge, but I know the debit is free. Usually they charge per transaction.
Yep.
And they do that, but it's a convenience fee, just like anything else you're gonna do online.
Okay.
Yep, but um I I don't remember if it was fifty cents or two fifty, but it's not a massive charge. Um duh duh duh, the Town Administrator Office Remodel. Well, my office in specific is about ninety-nine percent complete. Um if anyone's coming to the town hall, um we've put out plenty of posts to let them know that we've reconfigured town hall to make it a lot more accessible to people, and we've put all our heavy service level departments down on the first floor. Um so people not only can get that one-stop shopping, but that they can actually have uh, not go up those granite steps, which can be a little treacherous. Um unless they wanna visit me, then they have to go up the treacherous steps. It's like a challenge. Um so yeah, we've um, we've removed some of the old carpets, uh we've added the the tiles, um we've added some new paint, and that's gonna continue into um to Tracy and Lorraine's area um to keep modernizing and making sure everything's clean and bright and comfortable.
Mm-hmm.
Um most of the stuff is taken away. There hasn't been a lot of additive, but most of the process is taking away the old um and then, you know, putting a nice fresh coat of paint on to make everything-
Yeah, because there's new tile in there too, so.
Yep, yep, and uh and we've been working with the same tile that we, um the school uses. Um and so we've uh, we've got some of that laid down. It looks pretty bright and nice and cheerful in there now. So the town, uh the fire department and PD are working together on some dispatch duties um and some other uh projects that they're working for precinct map to get better response times. I'll get more updates on that. It just started about two, three weeks ago.
Okay.
Um we went out to bid for the latest Green Communities Grant, um meaning that we we hired someone to do the work for our Green Communities Grant, and that's starting right now, and that's going to the high school this year to reduce energy use. It's about two hundred and twenty-three, two twenty-three. Um and um we've got some good payback on our investments um for ASWAMSET. Um we've reduced our energy bills in ASWAMSET by forty-eight thousand dollars per year. Um and we're hoping to start doing the same um at upon acquit, um and then that helps us overall, and this is all funded through grant money.
Thank you to Nate, darling.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Nate, uh Lorraine, and Tracy all worked on these um to get them together. Um looking to leverage the MVP grant for opportunities in town, so um we need our disaster mitigation plan is our next step. Um and then we can start looking for a lot more grants through the MVP designation, which is kind of the biggest gateway.
What's the MVP?
The MVP.
Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's where all the-
I knew it would.
That's where all the-
You're just going to say it.
Yeah.
You might mess it up.
That's where all the grant money is located this year. They funneled a lot of the money into that area because they're really helping to fight things like climate change and to be able to make sure that um whatever we're doing is a sustainable solution for any type of building projects or any type of projects that we have with any of our resources. Um and last but definitely not least, um is we rolled out our EAP program to the department heads, and now the department heads are starting to share it with their people. What the EAP program is, is a total wellness program um for any of our associates to be able to a- um access. Um it has a lot of things, but a few of the great things are, it has some mental health counseling, some crisis calls, some work-life balance, um I guess you would call it um coaching. And if you're having issues with any type of parenting, elder care, legal issues or financial issues, they give you uh referrals to make sure that you're dealing with ethical people and people that have been um vetted throughout their services. They also work one-on-one with the uh, with the individuals calling, and it's a hundred percent confidential. So if someone's having a problem at work and they're going through a traumatic time and divorce or, you know, something like that, and they wanna be able to reach out to someone, but maybe have it a little bit confidential, we've given them that opportunity. Any type of mental health issue is pretty much at the forefront of what's going on in today's kind of cultural society. Um it's something that if you broke your leg, you wouldn't feel bad about getting treatment, but if you were having a mental health issue, people still have a stigma attached to it, and they might not be getting the help they need. Uh we wanna make sure we're offering that to them, and I know all our four, uh our chief, both our chiefs were really excited for the possibilities of being able to launch this to our first responders, um because there's a lot of research around what's going on with first responders and burnout and and stuff that's going on right now. So we're happy to be able to help and support them with these type of initiatives, and I'm happy to start rolling that out.
Okay, great.
So that's what's going on.
Great, thank you, Maureen. That was great. Um of course, this was the first time, so I'm sure it'll be a little more brief.
It was much bigger. I cut it down.
Yeah. I know, but it's the first time, so. Okay, so we are resuming our agenda with number twelve. Uh review and vote on the contract renewals for towns boarding with the animal shelter. So we currently have agreements with the towns of Acushnet, Berkeley, Bridgewater, Carver, East Bridgewater, Freetown, Halifax, Hanson, Rainham, Rochester, and Wareham to board dogs at our animal shelter, at the Lakeville Animal Shelter. All contracts expire on December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. The breakdown of fees received during two thousand nineteen through November twenty-first for each town is below. Uh so, total funds received for just boarding other dogs from other communities was four thousand three hundred five dollars. So. We board for that many, huh? We board for that many towns?
That many towns, yes. And actually, um the, the numbers for the annual um boarding fees have gone down significantly since we started this because the people in the other towns realize now that they're gonna have to pay, um you know, the board and a fifty-dollar fee to pick up their dog at the animal shelter, so um we've been helping the other towns with their stray dog issues.
Hmm, okay. All right, so.
So we have one contract to approve?
I just did one contract, the same contract, it's just the town names changed.
Okay.
Okay, so, excuse me.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
I guess the question would be that um it doesn't seem like a significant amount of money that we get. Should we continue with this program at all?
Well, these, these fees don't reflect um the dogs that are surrendered and brought into our adoption program,
Yeah.
which we then adopt out, and um I believe the adoption fee is two, three fifty now.
Oh, okay.
I believe, so any of those dogs that aren't picked up after ten days, if they're adopted, will go into our program, so then we make money from those dogs.
Okay.
From those adopters.
Yes.
I got it.
Plus, this doesn't include any kind of uh donations or whatever that-
Of which we get an amazing amount.
Amounts of donations.
Especially from people that don't live in Lakeville.
Yep.
A lot of people associated with these towns.
That's good.
I mean, you know, I I do think this is a testament to, you know, Dave Freights being committed to the animals and whatever, but um-
And I know Tracy's really involved in that too.
Yeah, yeah, but I uh-
But David does a great job.
He does a great job, but I, I think-
Hopefully he doesn't retire soon.
Yeah, I think the word's getting out, you know, that he does do a great job, so again, I think this is something we're definitely gonna have to revisit if he decides to retire someday. But um right now, I will entertain a motion to approve the contracts with each of these towns, to um renew the contracts with each of these towns.
I so moved.
All right, second on that. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So you'll have all those in the office to sign, or just sign-
They are in the sign folder.
Oh, okay, all women here?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Um so, item number thirteen is vote to accept the resignation of Kevin Bernardo, who um is still our health agent for, he's still there, right, just for?
Two Wednesday, yeah.
Okay. Um and to receive an update on the health agent position. So health agent Kevin Bernardo has submitted a letter of resignation effective November twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen. I don't know if you had a chance to read his letter.
Well, it's uh, first of all, let's uh accept his resignation, unfortunately.
I know, he's gonna be tough to replace, so um.
One second.
A second that.
Okay.
And all those in favor? Aye. Okay. So I don't know if you've had more conversation with Maureen or more up to date, so you can take over now.
Conversation about this at all.
Um so the position I know was posted internally, and the closing date for that posting was November twenty-second. We have an attached job description.
Okay, uh has the job description changed?
Um I, no, the job description has not changed. It was done in two thousand seventeen.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a new job description, and the dollar amounts are still good. I I looked at our MMA salary thing, um our job description dollars are still good for the position.
Okay, so uh I'm glad to see that we posted it internally first for a week to give other town employees the opportunity to apply. Uh so that was from November fifteenth through last Friday. Did we get anybody internally?
No, we did not.
Okay, so the next question, I'm sorry, are you okay?
No, go ahead. You can take this.
Um the next question would be, how are we gonna advertise this position?
So we've had some success um using ZipRecruiter and um the MMA.
Okay.
Yep.
So you're gonna put it in the Beacon?
Yep. That's what it is, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So that would mean that December's property already out.
Well, we're hoping, um those things pick up really quick.
Well, I'll take that back. You can put it on their website right away.
Yeah, yeah.
And people are watching that website, so yeah, probably-
Yeah.
Probably not worth putting it in the Beacon then.
Yeah, so um-
Cause they'll charge you to do that.
I believe Nate had a date that he wanted. He wanted to do it only for three weeks.
Says it, I don't think it says anything.
I don't know if it says it in the description or if it'll just say it in the posting, but um we need to fill this rather quickly. We have, you know, some pressing needs, um so we're really looking to, you know, do a full court press and and get this going.
Um yeah, and Nate had called me and, you know, he said, same thing that you just mentioned, that, you know, he had, he specifically had put a lot of time in, in two thousand seventeen, with all the appropriate parties getting the job description to a, you know, a much better, you know, um representation of what we wanted and the salary and everything. So I know that, you know, everyone's put a lot of time into it, and I agree, it'd be really nice if we could get someone.
And we didn't change any of the wording or responsibilities of the position.
I uh, I don't know if there's any um organization for border health agents that can be put out on the web, I don't know. I know, I think the building inspectors have a website that you can put up.
I can search it.
Yeah, I mean, you can put it out there too. I don't know.
I mean, we don't use Indeed or any of those.
The second you put it on ZipRecruiter, it gets picked up by Indeed.
By all those, okay.
Yep, yeah, they'll go on all the meta searches, so if anyone's looking for that position in, in, you know, especially in this area, it'll just automatically come up.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So. Fifteen, agenda item fifteen. I think we're almost back to order here. Request for Taunton Water Connections, portion of thirty-nine Cross Street and Five Harding Street. I'm okay if Rich, you wanna take this, because I'm not familiar with all these.
Well, uh first of all, uh we should have a plan here. I don't see- I don't see any plan. I don't even know what lot it, I mean, excuse me, the lot is listed on here, but I think we need to have a plan as to where this water line. I know the one on Harding Street and I know there's a water line on Harding Street, which is Route 44. But there's no water line on 39 Cross Street. I checked the map. So I don't know how you ask for water for 39 Cross Street for three residential dwellings when 39 Cross Street, I looked at the map today, is only one lot. So I don't understand what this means.
And I'm not familiar enough to give you a good rundown on what that map would look like.
I thought Paul Pucci would be here, but I guess he's not.
Yeah.
So I would like to see, you know, where the water line is going. I mean, I know he has a plan that's in front of the planning board, but I think one of the problems that the town has had in the past is that we don't have a plan on file as to where these water lines are going.
Okay.
Okay, so I think that's number one.
Do we ask, I'm sorry, Tracy, do we ask them for, when we get these applications, do we ask for those type of maps?
Sometimes, sometimes they just supply them. I never ask for them, but sometimes it's supplied with the.
Sounds like you like them all the time as part of it.
Well, I think, you know, if I'm looking at something and I'm going to vote on something, I mean, I give you an example, I know that the board approved seven house lots over Island Road, which was part of the Ted Williams, Lakeville Hospital, you know, property, and they approved it based upon single-family homes. Well, two of the lots is 14 units, you know, being put on there. I don't know if we had a change or a modification to that request, did we, Tracy?
Yeah.
Did the board vote on it?
I know we were notified about the change from the Department of Housing. I believe we also did a water connection to change the project. I can look at it, but I think we did.
Okay. But, so, I mean, as an example, and not picking on, you know, this particular developer, but it's asking for three residential connections for a maximum of 1,320 gallons per day. We ought to approve this by lot to make sure that they're only going to build a single-family house and not try, once again, to combine them and build a 40B project. Because I looked at the acreage here and I think the acreage, if I remember correctly, is about 12 acres, you know, altogether. Now, there's a bunch of wetlands in there, okay, as well, and there's some heritage turtle stuff that needs to be addressed, too. So I would suggest that we don't approve this until we know what they're doing.
The only reason I know even anything about this is because I've gone to three planning board meetings when I don't, where they talked about the commercial building. I have no clue on the residential dwellings. I mean, it might be nice to have more information.
Well, I looked at the plan, too, and the plan is going to require it to be sprinkled, okay? So where's the water line going? How many hydrants are we going to have inside the property? You know, because there's a fee associated with those hydrants, so they have to be paid for. And so I don't know what I'm voting on, so.
So if we could get more information?
Yeah, we can get more information and not only that, we can probably button up the process, so when they're presenting or filling out any of these forms, that they can answer those specifics. Will you sit with me and help create that form?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so this will definitely be tabled for.
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. All right. Okay, so agenda item number 16, discuss extending closing times for package store liquor licenses Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. So the ABCC allows the local licensing authority to extend the Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve package store closing hours until 11:30. In the past, the board has kept with the standard 11:00 PM closing times. So I guess the question is, do we want to continue with 11? We can go as late as 11:30, correct?
Yes.
I would hope that the stores would close by 11:00 PM on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. So I make a motion, we keep it as standard 11:00 PM closing time.
I second that and I just want to say that I think 11 is a great time. All those in favor?
11 o'clock is late, I don't know.
I know. All those in favor? Aye.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And just for information, none of the stores have requested it, but it's required every year, we have to do it.
Okay. I say go home and enjoy your family, but let's, what do I know? So, hold on.
I have minutes, what's the next?
I have number 17.
Yes.
Number 17, is that right?
Yes, that's the next one.
So discuss extending closing times for restaurants with liquor licenses on New Year's Eve. The board acting as the local licensing authority is allowed to extend the last call hours on New Year's Eve for restaurants with liquor licenses until 1:30 AM with all patrons out by 2:00 AM.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Let's see where we're at. So we did the temporary. So we have the review and vote to approve the selectmen meeting minutes of October 7th and November 12th. So October 7th would be, I'm the only one that can speak to it, so we need to use the rule of necessity. Yes, thank you. To approve those, yes. I'm not quite sure, someone can help me?
I can make a motion to approve it, but I can't vote on it.
You can't vote, okay.
I'll make a motion.
Or you can wait till John.
I think he was ready to, well, I can't speak for him, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the October 7th, 2019 minutes of the board of selectmen.
I'll second by the rule of.
You can second.
Okay.
But I can't vote on it.
Yep, so we will use the rule of necessity here and pass that, yes.
Can we do it, Tracy?
I don't think so. I think the rule of necessity, you have to have a quorum and say one was a new member that wasn't there and one was a member that was present.
Yep.
So we might want to just table these till our next meeting.
Okay, so we will table this October 7th to our next meeting.
But you can do the 12th.
And we will do the 12th. Any comments, questions, changes on that one?
October 12th?
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of, November 12th, 2019.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any new business?
New, old?
Okay.
We just had a correction on our free cash calculation. The state came back and we had had, for our parks, returned earnings is now $124, $930. It was at $104, so it's a correction in our favor from the state.
Oh, that's good, at least it didn't go anywhere.
So just to put it out there.
Okay, thank you. Any old business?
I have a new item.
Oh, new item, okay.
I, trying to be as transparent as possible to the townspeople. The town has, as many other towns, has been subpoenaed by the grand jury, having to do with the host agreements for the marijuana retailers and so we're not going to talk about it, but I want the townspeople to know because it's being reported in the media. We got a email from Channel 2, I guess Friday, the Boston Globe, you know, has reported. So it's out there in the media and I think the townspeople should be aware that our town has been subpoenaed as well. And the board will have no further comment after that.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else? Under old business, all I had was my minutes conversation that we talked about. I just wanted to be sure that we talked about that. Actually, I do want to go back to new business, I'm sorry. I also talked to council about remote participation and town council feels as though the most difficult thing about remote participation is just making sure we have reliable technology, which goes along with anything. But there needs to be a physical quorum, so that would mean that on a board of selectmen, our board is currently three members, two members would have to be present. So on a five-member board, three members would have to be physically present. But the remote participant can vote.
Okay.
They can vote. However, she cautioned on, once you say you're going to do it, you have to make sure your technology is, you know, so, and we have to figure that out before we, you know, so we can put that on a future to-do list and work on those details. But, you know, there's so many people in town that I know say to me, you know, geez, I would love to participate, but I travel for work or, you know, and I hate to turn away people who want to be on some boards and, you know, at least participate, especially on some of the boards that may not meet as frequently or even if they do, you know, someone's, you know, wants to put time in and it can be something that we work towards. So I just wanted to bring it up as a, because we weren't sure, I know we talked and we weren't sure if you could vote or couldn't vote, but you can vote, so that's kind of an important.
So I can get some other towns, I can see how they've done, if they've done remote participation and.
Yeah, or even as a board of selectmen, when we have, you know, a full board, maybe we can discuss it further to see if we want to go forward.
Sure.
But for that discussion, if you want to just get some information, I don't want to assume that, you know, my fellow board members want to.
No rush.
Do it, yeah.
It's not to get too excited about it.
You're going to be on FaceTime?
Yeah, but, you know, it's.
I don't mind doing it, but I just said, you know, it's not, shouldn't be.
Yeah, no, it should, yeah, definitely not, you know, a rush, rush. And again, you know, once we say, you know, we're going to do it. She cautioned me that the most difficult part for towns is making sure that their technology can, you know, that people can hear the person. It's not just, oh, what was that? You know, so it has to be done properly, so, but it is, you know, on the whatever, so.
Okay, good.
Any other business, anywhere, anything?
Yeah, I got some old business stuff.
Okay, old business.
First thing is that at the last meeting, I requested that the owner of the Lakeville Hospital come and meet with the board to discuss, you know, what's going on in the plans and I know that Maureen has contacted, in fact, we saw an email that said he didn't want to come to the meeting, but he'd be willing to meet with one member of the board and the town administrator. And so with the board's permission, I'd like to do that.
I nominate you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and then.
Report back to the board, yeah.
Yep, that would be great.
The fiscal '20 budget that we're in, okay, I haven't got a copy of the year-to-date numbers yet, but let's wait till November's done, which is almost this week, and then we'll do, then you can provide us that after that. Do you want a copy of that, too?
Yeah, I'll print them out there, it's too much to look at.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I have them printed in my office.
Okay, well, let's wait till the end of November because it's Friday.
I'm just thinking what a reasonable printout. I hate to like say to Todd, hey, can you print out? And then have you walk in four days later and say, hey, you know, so I don't know if we can.
I can do it through mine, I get the same one. I'm not a crazy fan of his formatting on there, so I want to work with him and see if he can format it different because the lines don't line up.
I don't like it either.
They're really difficult to read and you would catch yourself with a piece of paper as you go down.
It's not as fun.
No, no, no.
I would actually, I wouldn't mind seeing it at the end of every month.
Yep.
You know, I don't, do you want it more than that?
We get it around the first week.
Yeah.
I get it around the first of the month.
So the first or second selectmen's meeting, whether that is, you know, somewhere in there.
I'll make sure I have them available.
And then Maureen is going to look through the budget on a monthly basis and then identify key areas that we should be concerned about, like fire over time, you know, so there is some concerns now as to what we have to plan for. So just to keep a handle on those issues. And the same thing with the revenue projections, you know, I know that he has a one-page summary that he can provide us with that, so we'll get that, too.
And we'll coordinate that.
Thank you.
Okay.
And then I talked to Maureen today about the fiscal '21 budget process and revenue, you know, projections and that as a board, and I know she's about to have the meetings with the department heads to discuss the budget, but we need to give her some guidelines as to what our expectations are as far as the budget going to hurt. We don't want the department heads nor the school committee to just go out and say, oh, we're going to ask for anything we want, because that's going to be a waste of everybody's time.
Right, right.
Okay, so.
We have the wording down that it would be a maintenance budget.
Yeah, maintain what you've got, that's what I propose to her. And if we talk about, you know, we need to add a person or something like that, then we can discuss that during the budget process. But right now, what do we need to do to maintain the staffing and the services that we have today?
Yep.
Okay, now, that's not going to include any cost of living increases for the union contracts because those are going to all have to be negotiated, which we should discuss at the next meeting again, you know, so when John is here, we're all on the same page as to what we should be doing. And then the same thing as far as the revenue projections. If you work with Todd, he has a format that he uses to put together the revenue, you know, projections and once again.
And I have one that I will work with him to see if he has.
I mean, maybe it's the same thing, I don't know.
I'll work with him, see if his is better.
So we need to do that because the budget process, we only have one meeting, well, we have two meetings in December, but it's December 9th and then it's the 30th, you know, a month goes by like nothing, so we need to get that in place.
Yeah, there's a three-week gap between the 9th and the 30th and all the holidays in there, so.
Yeah, but I can give them my direction on being a maintenance budget until you guys do a formal direction on where you want to go.
Okay, and then Maureen told me today that I'm the representative for the regional finance committee, thank you.
Yeah, you agreed to that, by the way. You did agree to that.
And they're trying to set a meeting up between the two members from the town and the school committee chairman.
And.
Superintendent.
And the business manager, so.
So we'll sit down and discuss that and I'll give the board an update.
Okay. I have talked to a couple department head, actually more than a couple, but, and as far as like capital, we spent a lot of money last year. So I did say to some of the department heads that, you know, we're trying to put back together the capital expenditures committee. I don't know if that's going to happen in time or not.
I can reach out again to.
Yeah, to Katie.
Katie.
Yep. But either way, I've suggested, and, you know, this is my opinion only, that we spent a lot of money last year from the capital and I've suggested that they put their, their number one should be their number one.
And there really is, I mean, our departments are probably better equipped than they've been in a very long time.
Yep.
At this point, and I wouldn't expect their needs would, but would there be a lot of needs out of left field?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not expecting too many, yeah, surprises. You know, you have the usual, you know, maybe a couple new cruisers, which are, you know, on a rolling kind of a, and the highway department always, you know, needs something, but, you know, I have said to them that, you know, really think about it, you know, and we bought, I don't even know how many mowers last year, you know, so everyone really should be in a pretty decent situation, but again, we don't want to let things like that get away from us.
No, because it's much more. No, because it's much more expensive, you know, to deal with it.
Right.
When it's gone.
Yeah, and, you know, if we could actually get an update on the capital money, I don't know if we have.
Well, what I was saying to Maureen is I had promised her the capital plan process that actually I put together, and I was here in the finance committee twenty-plus years ago, so I thought I had it on a flash drive, but I don't.
Okay.
So, but I know I can get it, I'm gonna give it to Maureen, she's gonna look at it, and then the board will discuss it, hopefully at the next meeting, we can decide if that's gonna work, or if we need to make changes.
Yeah, and if we need to make changes, I'm pretty.
Yeah, I just know in the past, you know, it was like a lesser expensive item was put in number one, and number two was the more important, you know, and I'm like, let's dispense with the, you know, and let's just.
I'm hoping to work with the department heads and really narrow it down, so when it gets to the capital expenditures committee, they're not sorting through kind of that fluff that you're talking about.
Right.
There's some ways to touch.
Yep, I'm a pragmatic kinda girl, let's just. Okay, so we have executive session on here, in case you wanna talk about any kind of collective bargaining, but that's if.
I think we should wait till John's here, don't you?
Okay, so then we won't.
'Cause we're gonna have to be assigned to do something.
Yep, so then we don't even need to go into.
I don't think so, unless you have something else.
Unless you have litigation, anything.
Nothing that you can't.
'Cause we have collective bargaining or litigation, so if there's either one of those things, but if not, I am happy to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Just going, I'm on my phone.
Okay.
Going on to other items that are attached to the agenda, there's an invite, you got the invite, actually.
Yep.
To go to Old Colony to talk about future of member and non-member enrollments and feedback, so I don't know, I'd like to go, I don't know if any other members wanna go, do you wanna go, too?
You know what, I wish I could go, I really would like to go, but that's Plymouth County Commissioners meeting that night, so that's where I'm gonna be.
Okay, so I'll go.
I'll be, I'll be in attendance.
Okay.
Yeah, I really think that that's an important thing for.
I do, too.
You know, and I would love to go, but I don't know the Plymouth County. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, seven twelve, not bad.